Welcome to the City of Bettendorf, Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Monday, November 18th, 2024. It's 5 o'clock PM. Thank you all for being here. We do have a couple consent agenda items to talk about, and then we'll take up the rest of the consent agenda. We start with our Finance Director, Jason Schatt, and our Urban Renewal Report. Please excuse me. Hi, Jason, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Awesome.
So, on tomorrow evening's agenda, Council's asked to approve the annual urban report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. This is not something we've done a presentation on before, so we thought we'd kind of walk through it and...
Tell us why we have to do it.
...urban renewal for those at home. I know most of you are well-versed in the first couple of slides here, so it's a lot of review, but just an introduction to urban renewal in Iowa. There are several code sections that make rules about urban renewal. And if a city or county uses urban renewal, you are required to submit a report to the state through the Department of Management by December 1st of each year. The report documents the city's annual TIF activity, including TIF rebates, debt service, and future TIF obligations as of June 30th of the reporting year. So in this case, this past June 30th. What is urban renewal? It's a law in Iowa, or group of laws really, that provides cities with necessary tools to encourage new economic growth. In Bettendorf, we typically use those tools of tax increment financing and urban renewal debt. Use of urban renewal tools is limited to established geographic districts called urban renewal areas. All TIF districts are within an urban renewal area, and all urban renewal debt must be used to finance projects within that specific area. Cities can create urban renewal areas to enhance economic development efforts, assist in retaining and attracting businesses, remove slum and blight, and to perform public improvements. What is tax increment financing? This is a tool within urban renewal. Cities can use this to finance the costs of public improvements or assist in private development activities through tax rebates and economic development grants. Use of TIF is limited, a lot like urban renewal, to a defined geographic district, but it is within an urban renewal area. A TIF district could be an entire urban renewal area or just a piece of it. We have some of both in Bettendorf. Some URAs, urban renewal areas, have multiple TIF districts. We're sitting in one right now. The downtown urban renewal area has four active TIF districts in it today. About 75% of taxes paid for new valuation within that TIF district is diverted to the TIF fund for TIF purposes, including those taxes that would normally be due to the county and the school district. On this page, if you've attended our Night 1 of Citizens Academy, you may remember this chart, but this is kind of my visual representation of how a TIF works. I did this for my own benefit and to describe TIF at Citizens Academy, but I've seen it actually used in other places. I think people have stolen the idea from me. But if you follow the gray bar down, we're talking about declining value of an existing property. When a developer comes to us and asks for TIF, we set a base value represented by the straight line across the middle of the page. And for a period of time, that developer can capture any taxes paid for new valuation over and above that base. And that's what the yellow triangle is representative of. At the end of the TIF, you can see that all of those taxes then benefit all taxing districts, including schools and counties. So just a real quick review of TIF. Onto our annual urban renewal report. We have 18 urban renewal areas in Bettendorf. Only eight of those are active right now. There are 13 TIF projects throughout those. You can see them listed there. There are three with asterisks: Tangofoot Investors, Hotel Associates, and McClair Manufacturing. Those are, those TIFs are all expiring after FY24, so we will not rebate those in FY25 or beyond. Into the urban renewal report. And if I could change the aesthetics of this report, I would. I think it's very, it's kind of difficult to look at and digest what you're looking at, so I'll do my best to walk you through it. On the first page, you'll see a summary of all urban renewal activity for Bettendorf for the year. Don't be alarmed by the TIF debt outstanding of $40 million at the top of the page. That's not actually, in most cases, not actually debt. While we do have a little bit of debt associated to TIF outstanding, most of that $40 million is our estimates of future TIF rebates to the active TIFs that you saw on the previous page. So if their valuations do what the development agreement set out to do, that is what we could rebate to them over the next several years. Moving down, the first page of the annual urban renewal report, you'll see the cash balance within the TIF funds. This is all the TIF funds. TIF revenue for the year across all funds. Rebate expenditures, about $2.7, $2.8 million. Non-rebate expenditures, those are actually debt service payments on the little bit of TIF debt that we have related to the TBK Sports Complex, paid through TIF increment. For total expenditures of $3.2 million, so we added a little bit to our fund balance in TIF. After all of those payments are then TIF debt or TIF obligations, I'll say outstanding. At the end of the fiscal year was just about $36 million. And again, that's, that includes all estimated future TIF rebates. So not necessarily a debt that we have outstanding today. Subsequent pages will show activity for...
Jason?
Yes?
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. On the prior page?
Yes.
You show zero for LMI. Could you just give me a 10-second highlight on what LMI is? And whether we have any residential TIFs in the city?
Sure. LMI is, help me out, Jeff, low...
Low, moderate income.
Low, moderate income housing. We have not, to date, used TIF for residential development purposes, so we do not have any residential TIFs. And we obviously don't have any low to moderate income housing within those. So that'll probably remain zero until such a project would come to us that council would approve.
Jason, if I could, we do have the multi-residential project next door at the Bridges Apartments. So we don't and won't incentivize or support through TIF single-family housing, but for the sake of the removal of the property that was there prior to and to galvanize that downtown project, we did do TIF incentive on that multi-res project.
Thanks for catching that, Jeff. That project started out commercial, went to residential. As we work through the pages, and there are several, I don't know if you've spent any time looking at the report. I've only, I've only shared one urban renewal area in the presentation here, but you'll see that you can look at individual URAs and then even further individual TIF projects. So just for example purposes, we'll look at the Spruce Hills Urban Renewal Area. Today, that includes the CDC QC TIF at the site of the old Lodge Hotel, that development. You can see this particular urban renewal area had TIF revenue of $296,914 and rebate expenditures of $297,149. There is cash in the fund, so we were able to handle that little bit of a deficit. As we work through the page, you'll see what we expect to pay in the future. Tangofoot Investors was one of those TIFs that expires at the end of June of FY24. So at the beginning of the year, we owed, we say owed, that we expected to pay $33,837. That's what we did. So that one will be zero going forward. At the beginning of the year, we expected, over the course of the next several years, to pay CDC QC about $2.2 million in TIF rebates. Again, that's over the course of several years. You'll see their last payment is set for 2030. So that's what remains for the rest of the life of that TIF. Here's our rebates by project. Again, we rebated Tangofoot Investors at one last time, $33,837. We rebated CDC QC in this year, $263,312. Here's the valuation data for those TIFs. I think this is just CDC QC. So you can see about $11 million in taxable TIF valuation and revenue received of $263,104. Like I said, the report in and of itself can be a little overwhelming to look at, a little confusing if you don't know right where to look. So I hope maybe introducing it in this way will help. But that is everything that I have tonight, and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Questions for Jason? Nick?
Yeah, less related to the TIF information, but was the new system able to provide this for you faster, more accurately, less time invested? All those good things?
I would say yes to all. This is, this report requires a little bit more outside-of-the-system work as well. But yeah, the new system is a huge help in all of these state reports. We have a few more coming at you at First Meeting in December, and it's been a huge help in those, the road use report and the annual financial report, so.
Would this have been something you'd have been able to do prior to? I don't know that I've seen some of these before, so.
Yes, this is, we've done this every year. We've just never put it on for a presentation and talked about it as a group. I thought that might be valuable to get in front of you before we send it off to the state. Thank you.
Other questions?
Greg Adamson, and Greg Jager, since Jager already got one in.
Greg squared?
Yeah, squared.
What's the average? Didn't we several years ago say we didn't want these 20-year? What's, what's our average? Seven, eight, 10?
You know, we have quite a few longer TIFs outstanding, a couple 20-years. Probably 10-years would be my, where a lot of them land. I don't know if Jeff speaks to that better.
All right, I mean, just, just in general?
Yeah.
10? That's pretty reasonable, 7 to 10, right?
I would, I would add to that too, if I could. So the thing about it that we've started to do over the last few projects, and Tangofoot Investors is a good one to cite, is in addition to a term of time, we've started to cap, in some cases, the actual total amount they could receive. So like in the case of Tangofoot Investors, it was a period of time, I believe it was eight years, or $550,000 in total increment achieved. The developer in that case actually achieved that amount because he far exceeded expectations in three years. So we gave it the potential for up to eight or a cap of $550,000. So there's a couple things we're using now as levers we can pull to kind of regulate these.
That's a great idea.
Hotel Associates here on this page was the same way. That's the Hilton Garden Inn on the road. I think the cap there was either $2 million or $2.5 million, and they've achieved that before the term of the TIF. So that's another example of that.
Second, second question. So you have a valuation set for the TIF, right? Say the place is worth a million, and then the TIF's over. How often do they come back and say, "Well, it really isn't worth a million", and try to get a re-evaluation? Does that happen a lot?
It happens occasionally. I wouldn't say it's a lot.
Yeah, it doesn't happen a lot. Generally anymore as well, Councilmember Adamson, we're putting language in our development agreements that suggests you cannot contest the valuation of your property during the term of the development agreement. Otherwise, we have the right to not appropriate to them. So we're not getting too many, I, I don't believe we're getting challenged at all on those because they know...
Up front, they know it.
Yeah, if they challenge, and they agree to that term. So if they challenge it, then we have certain rights according to our development agreements.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jason, just a couple of quick things. Picking one, the John Fry Urban Renewal portion of the report indicates that there is no activity going on in it at all. The John Fry increment timeframe has long passed. We're still required to report that district even though there's no activity in it?
Yep, it's an, as far as the state is concerned, it's an active urban renewal area, even though the TIF district is not active. So it stays on the record.
And then following up on that one, it says fiscal year, the TIF taxing district statutorily ends 2026. I realize the urban renewal law has changed quite a bit through the various decades. Do any of our urban renewal districts now have end dates on them? And are any of those end dates coming up in the next three or four years?
I'd hate to, I'd have to defer to Jeff on that.
I can, yeah, I can help with that a little bit. So Councilmember Jager, we actually, Chris Curran and I actually worked on a number of renewals of urban renewal plans for areas that were relevant. If they weren't seeing activity or necessarily relevant, they have either fallen off or they're set to. The term by state code anymore is a 20-year life of an urban renewal plan. If at such time that activity needs to continue, you can renew an urban renewal plan. You cannot renew an urban, or a TIF district. A TIF district is finite. It is capped at 20 years. But an urban renewal plan can be renewed and re-upped if the city council chooses to do so. As it is right now, many of those that were there have fallen off. So I believe Jason reported, was it 18, Jason? Total urban renewal?
Yep.
Many of those are nearing, nearing the end of their life. I believe currently, right now, of the eight active, we probably only have five that are longer terms that you'll see going out into the 2030s and potentially 24-ish range.
So we've, so we've got five current urban renewal districts in the city?
We currently have, I believe, eight that are active.
Eight urban renewal districts?
Yes, and of that, I believe, three of those, leaving us in that five, will go out into the mid 2030s or so. Those other net three will probably come off here with by, by 2030. And don't quote me on that, but I could get you the actual times, but those are those...
I was just curious, when the, when the report came out, I'm curious as to how many we had, how long they were.
Sure, and at any given time, we can come up with that. But some of them are like Bettendorf Hotel Associates, that Duck Creek Plaza area. That urban renewal tract is going to expire here fairly quickly because it's pushing 20 years in life cycle. So it'll come off. We don't anticipate any more projects or TIF incentives going out to where we'd want to renew that area. So yeah.
Can you refinance the debt beyond the TIF district?
Yeah.
If you were to borrow $1 million and do it over 20 years, in the 10th year, you get a cheaper interest rate, can you refinance for another 20 years?
I don't think you can do 20.
That's a good question.
I don't think you can go beyond the original life.
I just, I haven't looked at it, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think we'd have to look into that a little bit further. I, I don't know if we could.
That's a good question. But I'm, I'm not, that'd be a good question for Krista.
My understanding is, most of the time, the city's not doing debt anyway. They're just doing rebates.
Right.
So it doesn't come up. But if you're going to borrow money for a particular purpose and down the road, the rates drop, is it beneficial for the city to go ahead and refinance at a cheaper rate and lesser cost overall? Just curious. We have an instance maybe coming up.
That's a good question.
Out, I would guess, to Decker's point, you probably couldn't refinance beyond the life of the TIF, but you could probably refinance within that TIF at a lower interest rate. You know, it's kind of like going from a 30 to a 15-year mortgage or something, you know?
With the Fed dropping rates, if some, if a project were to come up and we were to do it by TIF debt.
Yep.
All right, any further questions? Thank you very much, Jason. Appreciate your presentation. We move to a presentation for Fire Chief Troy Sade, Chief Building Official Jeremy Peterson. Oh, you know what? That's on consent. Let's approve consent to remain on Consent Item B for tomorrow night.
So moved.
Favor. Any opposed? All right, I got a little head myself. But I'm going to reintroduce Fire Chief Troy Sade and Chief Building Official Jeremy Peterson with the assistance from our Development Director, Mark Hunt. This is talking about some changes to our building codes, and we welcome our friends from Davenport with whom they've been working. You guys feel free to introduce them if you'd like, but we do appreciate both teams getting together so we can make it a little bit easier on our, our building community and cooperate to do what's right for our city. So thank you all, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, with us tonight, Chief Building Official from Davenport, Jake Ralphs.
Hi, Jamie.
And Fire Marshal Chief Jim Morris.
Hi, Jim.
Chief Morris, and I've been friends for a long time. I don't know if we're still friends after we went through this code and tried to update. No, it's been great. And part of the reason we're updating this code is to align, you know, Davenport, Bettendorf, Scott County in general. So our amendments are very similar, and you're going to see that tonight. We're going to go through this. I have quite a few slides. I'm going to just hit bullet points on them. If you have questions, go ahead and ask. I think you've seen this information before, so it shouldn't be new.
The law will be going into public hearing tomorrow, so you'll have time to digest it and come back with questions.
Yeah, absolutely. And Jeremy and I will tag-team this. And Jeremy, if you want to have input along the way, go ahead and, go ahead and do so. So part of your goal-setting direction was update our code amendments. You know, some of them are quite old. I know Jeremy and Chief Kenorick were working on Title 10, Chapter 7, which is a fire code. So they had that kicked off. We updated all the code sections in there. You're going to look at the International Fire Code, Building Code, Residential Code, Property Maintenance, Housing, Swimming Pools and Spas, and General Contractor Requirements. So it's a pretty big lift in our code amendment, so we're happy to get that done. Why are we doing it? Once again, we've historically done it every other code cycle. The reason why is buildings, buildings change, building construction materials change, the methods change, fire trends change. We've got to be current. And part of that is, once again, life safety is the biggest thing, the value behind it. Technology has improved so much over the last nine years. We're going to utilize that so we're more efficient. Updated processes. We've streamlined our process through the city. Now the Fire Department works with the Building Department on our reviews, so we send out a joint review instead of separate reviews, trying to be on the same page. You never want to drop more than two cycles for your ISO rating. You want to keep that valuable. Control fire density, we'll, we'll talk about one of those. That's probably the biggest topic. Once again, once you put a lot of families under one roof, it, it tends to get to be catastrophic. There's a huge fire load in there that we want to kind of control. And then consistency with Scott County. The process that we've gone through had multiple Board of Appeals meetings of their proposed changes, took their feedback. They did unanimous approval on September 12th. We've done several general contractor meetings hosted by Davenport and Bettendorf in September. We did informational meetings for fire alarm contractors, sprinkler contractors. Once again, we did that in Davenport and Bettendorf, gave plenty of opportunity for feedback from the people that this is going to affect. And overall, I think, I think most of them were happy with those changes. They're happy to see Bettendorf and Davenport have the same code. So when they're putting up a building in Davenport, it's the same as putting it up in Bettendorf. Real quick, this, Title 10, Chapter 7 talks about going to the 21 code and the appendancies. We left a couple of those out for various reasons. Example would be Board of Appeals. We already have Board of Appeals process. We don't need to follow that in the 21 code. The next thing is the amendments themselves for Section 2. Authority of Fires, evacuation. Believe it or not, there was nothing in Section 10412 that had that we could evacuate a building. Other sections mentioned it, but this is where it talked about buildings. So Section 104 gives a fire code official, I believe it's in Building Code as well, to remove people from victim, a building if it's unsafe. The next two, operational and construction permits. This allows it to send it to a third-party review in case maybe I'm not comfortable doing cryogenic laboratories or something like that. We can send it out to a third-party review. The general contractor can also request a third-party review, which makes it nice. Once again, this is, we're following the Municipal Code 10, 1034, getting in line with the Building Department for our fee structure. Some of the fees that you've seen in the past is, like the open burning is a $10 fee. That's going to remain the same. But we're trying to align it, and we're aligning with other departments as well. I'm going to give you a quick example on that just in case you're wondering what fee structures are. Like a sprinkler alteration, something runs around $1,500, it's a $38 review fee. You get into doing a full sprinkler system for a commercial building that runs around $22,000, you add a $260 fee. That, that includes the review of the submittal itself, all the inspections that go with it. So it's, it's pretty reasonable, to be quite honest. General definitions. Crowd manager wasn't in the definition section, but it references it in the code, so we thought we'd put in there. Commercial cooking appliances. This is in the 21 code. It is word for word, except for the last three words. It says including for employees. There's been some companies that thought they didn't have to follow the life safety systems because they were just cooking for their employees. Section 307 talks about open burning. That's kind of a, a big section. Once again, we refer to our municipal code, which is Title 4, Chapter 3, Section 1, because we already have it. So that's what that, what first one is saying. I will be updating that in the next couple of months. You'll see a proposal coming forward for open burning changes. And 307 talks about open burning at commercial buildings. We don't want them burning solid fuels because of the embers. Most of those restaurants, bars now, they run off the, you know, LP or natural gas. They're fire features and they're safe. So that's the way we want to keep it. Hydrants for standpipe systems. This is in our current code, but it only addresses standpipes. Now the systems are combination systems, so we wanted to add the FDC in there, which is Fire Department Connection. The second one, just, we want them painted red. We want to know there's a difference. Usually it's a smaller line, and sometimes it's a dead end or loop system. And our guys need to make good decisions early on which hydrant they should hit. Size of the main is also in our current codes. But we did add the materials to be used in the right of way. Ductile iron, and it's for durability and longevity reasons. And then, once again, it's, it's going to be able to be adjusted for Title 12, Chapter 3A. I've talked with Brent about it. Brent's in support of it. Iowa American Water's in huge support of it. And Danport already does it. So it's a good thing moving forward. Sprinkler rise room. We don't want an electrical room for obvious reasons. That's what the first section talks about. And the last one talks about just having it monitored with a temperature. We want to make sure some of those aren't, aren't freezing. We've had problems with them in the past. When that whole system freezes up, then we have to, you know, have to do fire watches. We can't control it. So it's a simple temperature in that room. Balconies and decks. Gets into your group R occupancies. And when I talk about group R occupancies, I'm talking in the commercial world. It's your R1s, R2s, R3s, R4s. So you're looking at hotels, motels, apartment buildings, drug and alcohol abuse homes like that. We just want to, we want to make sure that those patios are protected. Because everything they put on a patio isn't protected, isn't fire rated, the patio door's not fire rated. Everything they put on there tends to burn, such as furniture. It's in the code now, but they do have the exception if, if materials are non-combustible. So we just changed that. Last section talks about just a canopy over required exit door. You get vehicle fires under there. You don't want that smoke banking down and pushing into that exit. So if they keep their canopies at 13.6, which is required anyway for our fire trucks to get through, we don't end up with an issue. Building footprint. Once again, believe it or not, this, this first section is now in the 24 code. I think it was Chief Chapman or maybe Chief Moore sent it to me. We came up with this. It's, once again, it's for tactics. If you have to keep extending hoses, if you have to go into a hotel and you have to go more than 400 foot, we're not very efficient. So they're going to put standpipes in those, in those buildings. And that last section talks about only one fire alarm control panel in a building. We've had apartment buildings come in. They've got 15 different apartment buildings. They want to put all their control panels in, in the office area. Well, we can't allow that. That wastes time. We've got to stop there and then go to the building where it's at, see what's on that panel. So we're just using technology. Last one is just, the last 907.1.5 talks about, we can add enunciator panels. We're getting some pretty large buildings. And if you only have one enunciator panel at the front, it's not very good for us operational wise. Something's instructors. Addressable. So this is in the current code as well. This is right out of IFC. But the only word we changed in it, it says an approved fire alarm. We put approved addressable fire alarm. And that's big because once again, it gives us the information we need. Most systems are at that point now. Most, most of your alarm systems can do it. It's a programming issue. So we're going to use technology to help us. And there, there's a few exceptions for number of devices and stuff that aren't needed. And then the R3, 3 dwellings. This is just following that section 907.2 with a couple of footnotes. Pulse stations are a big thing in schools. They don't want them anymore. We can see with active shooter reasons why. So we're leaving it up to the fire code official to require them or not require them. Monitoring the systems, that's the current code that we've been doing. And the next one is a big programming one. It's descriptive location. And that doesn't mean much to, to you, but it means a lot to our first engine companies. If it comes across the screen, it may see, may say like SD 317 STRA. What that allows our companies to do is they know it's smoke detector in room 317, use stairwell A for your attack. Then we'll use stairwell B for our rescues. Instead of going to the panel and trying to pull out an old zone map or pull up a pre-plan, it's just much more efficient for our guys. And then obviously detection location, believe it or not. Smoke detectors, if the building's fully sprinkled, aren't required in stairwells. That's where our personnel operate. If we can get early detection there, if we know that maybe we can't use that stairwell, that's a big notification for us. So we're going to put that in there. Group A occupancies. You, you see it out at TBK. You get 1,000 people in there. You get the music going. You get the games going. The fire alarm goes off. It's very, it's very hard to hear that. A lot of those panels, because of their occupancy load, have microphones that you can talk into to give direction. If that music's playing, the games are on, you're never going to hear it. So once again, it's a programming thing. It's tied in. As soon as that fire alarm kicks, then the music shuts down, the game's shut down. Group 1R occupancies. We kind of grouped them all together. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about group R in the next few. It's one of the biggest hazards we have. It's sleeping, believe it or not. Everybody looks at chemical plants and pipelines and all that. We look at people when they go to bed. We want to make sure they're protected. So what it's doing is anytime they update their system for old systems, they got to put in systems that can be addressable. It's not retroactive. It's when they, their old, their new system or their old systems fail. Single and multiple smoke station detection. Once again, this is in the code 907.211 is. We added the addressable part to it. Once again, it helps our guys get in, get out. And it only deals with your R1s, 2s and 4s and Is. Last section talks about mixed occupancy. If you look at some of the downtown area, especially in Danport, we have a few of them here. Businesses and then residential above. Their systems aren't interconnected. They should be interconnected. If you get a fire in that basement, commercial building, and the residents aren't, aren't notified, that could be for disaster, especially their stairwells. Come out through a lot of those businesses. So. This is a two-part thing, panic and fire exit hardware. First one deals with access for law enforcement and fire to get into schools for active shooter situations. Labeling of the doors is big for us as well. Not only on the outside, which all the schools have done it up to this point, but the inside. Over the last few years, we've done some extensive training on it. And it's just going to aid to the efficiency of our guys in and out. The last part of that deals with hotels. Once again, you need, you need access into those hotels, into the stairwells. General 1203.1, and we're getting close, I promise. Basically, it's a control switch that shuts down the generator up at a desired location, generally by the fire alarm. Most of the time generators are in the back 40 of the property because they're kind of ugly. They put fences around them. For our guys to get there and shut them down takes time. So we're just going to add a switch to it. This is also in our code section currently, but our code section says it's a $900 base rate. And that's sometimes hard to justify when you're billing, if you've been there just an hour, if you've been there 40 hours. So we wanted to clean it up. We wanted to align it more with the FEMA standards of what they charge. And I know surrounding fire departments are doing the same thing. Last one. These are three that really deal with the quantities of flammable liquids and combustible storage. And in the code, it, it leaves it up to the authority having jurisdiction to determine that. Got with Mark Hunt and Taylor Bestwick. And so we, you know, obviously your only, your commercial areas and industrial areas would be allowed. And that still has to be approved by the community development director and the fire code official. That is the end for mine, I believe. I went through that fast. I apologize. I don't know if there's any questions?
Questions for Chief?
Yes, Greg, Adamson.
Couple, couple things. Do we, we don't have any direct alarms coming into fire stations.
No, everything goes through dispatch. So one of those code sections I didn't mention, everything goes through SEC. And that's that point-to-point descriptive location that we talked about. So what that's going to do is it's going to come in there. It'll come into their computer system. We do a Phoenix automated dispatch now. And then that information transfers over to our CAT system and our engines and, and officers' cars. And we get it real time.
You get a lot of false alarms?
I wouldn't say a lot. We get a few. And usually it's just a bad detector. But honestly, the, the businesses are, are really great about getting somebody called in to get it fixed.
We had out of 1,000 alarms years ago at the PD, we have 5% were good. I want to thank you and the police department for helping us with St. Joan of Arc School. And you, have we pretty much worked out the, there's fire considerations, there's active shooter considerations. Are they pretty much able to work out the?
They, they are, I guess.
If there's conflicts?
Yeah, it'd be, depends who you talk to. So a lot of schools back in the day didn't want to do sprinkler systems. So they would do additions and then it wouldn't be over that 50%. And then they do another addition. Next thing you know, another addition and your square footage is huge without sprinkler systems. So moving forward, most schools are putting in sprinkler systems. There are opportunities in the code for a delayed response. If you have sprinkler systems or fire alarm systems, you just have to have that in your emergency response plans. And we've talked to the schools about that.
And we're working with that, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? All right. More presentation. Jeremy, are you up?
I'm up.
All right, buddy.
Troy just had the IFC. I have the IBC, IRC, IPMC, ISPSC.
They got to take us over to the arsenal next? And he's got four slides.
I tried to simplify.
Oh, man. He did well.
First slide is, what do those initials mean?
Well, I'll go through them too for you. But first, we got the proposed general requirements. In our previous world, we had always been by the same general requirements, $10,000 surety bond. And you can be a subcontractor here in the city and build whatever you wanted, to be honest. We're proposing to kind of tier that now, leaving the residential contracting requirement exactly the same. Nothing changes on that whatsoever. But when you get down into the commercial, the multifamily and the industrial construction zones, now we're going to have a different standard in place. You need to obtain the national standard, standard, general building contractor A or B certification from the International Code Council, which is the same code council all the inspectors go and get all their certifications from, or internationally accredited approved testing agencies. There's a handful of them out there that do certifications throughout the country that a lot of the bigger general contracting firms go through. We do have a caveat in there. There's an alternative method. If you are not able to obtain one of those A or B certifications, you can, or you can go pick up a $250,000 surety bond. And that's kind of the alternative method to having one of those certifications. After that, we get into the IBC. IBC is International Building Code. Dummy it down, every commercial building usually falls into the IBC. IRC is residential. That's going to be your 1 and 2 family dwellings. For the International Building Code amendments, we really don't have anything that we are changing. We don't have anything that we're adding. We did have an amendment in our previous code cycles that took out storm shelters in all type E occupancies. Type E occupancies are your schools. I don't know when this came in or how this came in, but we are going to remove that out. If you're going to build a school, per code, they require to have a storm shelter. So we are going to leave that code as is. IBC is done. Next is the residential code. This is the 1 and 2 family dwellings. Similarly, all I put in here was the differences from what we already have. We've had amendments in there. We go through a process of getting all the logistics of our chapter 1s, putting our name in there, putting certain dates and stuff. This is just the changes that we have. Section Arthur 313.1, we used to delete these out completely. We are now proposing to add to the end of the sentence to add five or more units. What that sentence says is an automatic sprinkler system shall be installed in townhouses. We used to delete that out completely. We're now proposing to put it at five or more units. Table 507.3.1, basically the next three sections go into decks. The new code sections that were added in the 21s make decks almost impossible to build. We would spend more time with people building decks than we would building new houses and building new commercial buildings. So we tried to simplify this because we have not had an issue with decks in the area. It just kind of goes into the footing sizes and requirements. If you have a deck, if you have a deck with a roof on it, there's a few additional things, nothing too insane. We already use these already.
Your Honor?
Yes, Greg.
Quick question on that? It says pier footing is designed by professional engineer and then talks about the depths and the widths of the point loads. Are we telling the engineer what it is we want? And then the engineer says, yes, this is being done? Or do we want the engineer to be doing some design work in addition?
So typically like numbers 2 and 3 there are what people will come in and propose to us. Those are our code amendments. They can go to an engineer and have them calculate this all out, and they can give us a different design. We've had some designs that are, you know, 18 inches wide by four foot deep, and they don't need any rebar whatsoever. We've also had them where they've got cages going down, you know, six different cages going down for the same structure. Both of them need it, but there's different pitches to a roof. There's different sizes. You have snow load, you have uplift.
So what you're doing is you're giving the homeowner the opportunity to go out and get something specific to their property. If they don't want to do that, they take the generic.
So and so's my buddy. I know he's an engineer. He can calculate this and we can do it this way.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And that kind of goes into the third one here. The new deck footing size and everything would make homeowners and deck builders figure out tributary loads for every post they have on their house or on their deck. We've had 12 inch by 42 inch deep footings for as long as I've ever been building. They've worked fine. To have a homeowner come in and try and figure out tributary load, it's like, well, this post only needs to be, this one needs to be 16, this one needs to be 8. We'll spend days and days trying to get that figured out. So just sticking with what we've had, easy peasy. It seemed like the, the smart move. That's all I've got.
Questions for Jeremy? Greg A.
I'm sorry. Your first.
You're inquisitive today.
First slide.
First slide.
Greg, can you use your mic?
No.
I've noticed that, but could you?
At least try harder.
I'm, I'm just very soft spoken. No, not that one. The.
Go to the first slide.
What, the 250,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I'm sorry. I, we've talked about this. If anybody else wants to jump in and ask questions, please do. So if, if somebody's building a one or two family dwelling, they have to put a surety bond of $10,000. So what's that cost?
A hundred bucks.
A hundred bucks, all right.
A little under that.
So that's, so that would just be a cost to be passed on to the buyer, part of the cost, right? Multifamily, industrial, commercial, so the bigger stuff. You have to, there's some standard that they have to pass?
There's a certification test they can take that basically they pass this test, they become a general contractor A or B.
And what, what does that do? I mean, what does that prevent just Joe Smith and saying, I'm a contractor and building a?
So we have a ton of business owners, building owners, playing general contractor.
Okay.
They want to go in and do their own project.
I get it.
They have no clue what they're doing. But they had $100 in their pocket.
Okay.
So they're trying it out. And we're struggling multiple times a day on the same thing. Where they, they put everything together. They cover their walls in drywall. They put the ceilings down. They call us like, hey, ready to open?
Jeremy, if I could, if I could jump in and just give a real world example of what we deal with here. Take a really nice development, our downtown, just turned into a restaurant and a salon. Great people, good intentions. Had a hundred bucks in their pocket. They wanted to do the project themselves. He'd hung some drywall before, and that was a limit of his knowledge. Now we're talking hoods. We're talking sprinkler systems. We're talking egress. We're talking ADA requirements, a lot different than hanging drywall in your basement.
Sure.
And what happens to the city when those things come forward that way is it puts us in the position of having to help them, help them design and then review the design. And we should never be in that position. We should never be the creator of the work and then the reviewer of that same work. That is a, an issue we don't want to be, a situation we don't want to be in. And so what this standard, and it's across the quad cities, across the Iowa quad cities, will say that if you want to enter that commercial area as a commercial general contractor, you're going to have the certification, which is available through the ICC, the same company that produces these codes, or you'll have a higher level bond. And I think that will take that, that person who has a hundred bucks in their pocket and wants to do something that is, you know, inspiring to them, but not really in their wheelhouse, will take them and lead them down a much better path. And I will tell you, when we work these people at the end, they go, you were right. We should have probably had a GC do this.
Okay, so two more questions. So that, if they don't have this certification, they have to post 250,000 down. And what's that cost from 2,500? Okay, which isn't horrid.
Is that per, per unit or is that just?
One time.
For the whole, the whole project?
For the whole, for the whole time, anything they do.
You purchase this or get this through your insurance company and then we put it on file, you can do 15, 20 jobs.
So. All right, so they get this, they get this accreditation. They've done class or whatever and learned about what they're supposed to do and all that sort of stuff. Who, who checks them? Who knows, who checks them that they got, they've got this and they're doing it right?
We can do that. Similar to what we do for electricians, plumbers, they're all on a database. We go in and look to see if they have their credentials. Fire does it for sprinkler systems, fire alarms. Every one of those specialty trades has these rules and requirements they have to do. And we just go into our search engine, pull up their company and see if they have the required licenses they need. Sprinklers, they have to be at a NICE set level 3. NICE set's just a different name for, you know, International Code Council. That's what they do. So they're doing the testing.
That sounds, that sounds rea, I just didn't, I just didn't understand it. That's.
Other questions for Jeremy? All right.
I got, I got one slide if I'm, if I'm allowed, but I don't think I have the screen back. So the other part of this code you heard about was the property maintenance code and the, and the rental housing code. And so the property maintenance code is, is generally the main code we use to, to judge rental housing by. So we're updating that to the 2021 standard, which makes sense. So all the codes are on the same year and the same cycle because they interconnect. So the IFC, the IRC, the IBC and the IPMC, they all play together. They all need to be on the same code cycle or same year so we can use them as they reflect to each other. The rental housing code previously was cumbersome. And I think what we've done here is streamline it. We, it's pretty much overall the same code. It's a four-year cycle. We're going to try and get you passed and put you on that four-year path. That's our goal every time. We did have a minor increase in fees. We went from a 35 for the first unit and 10 for the, every unit after that to a 50 and 15. That's pretty standard with the inflation that we've seen across the Iowa quad cities. We're right in the same wheelhouse as our neighbors. We did take out the term license and we're using the term registration. And that's kind of a citywide effort. I think we're going to do more of that as a city as well. And we were unnecessarily duplicating code. So we were trying to put a bunch of things in about rental housing that described it being safe and what needed to be done. That's all covered in the IPMC. We don't need to take that on ourselves. We can just adopt the IPMC, which we do in this code update. And then we explain our rental housing registration process and the frequency of inspections. Again, we've talked about this before in info meetings. So really, the user out there in the field isn't going to feel any different. It's going to feel the same way to them. Our code is going to be much more streamlined, make a lot more sense, and be easier for us to, to use out in the field.
Questions for Mark? Greg, Jay?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, I, I'm going to ask a favor of you, if you would. Could you put on your calendar for like 18 months from now and just give us like a five-minute or 10-minute update on how Davenport is doing with their changes to the rental codes? It's been in the media that because of all the problems Davenport has had, they have added tenants' rights and given the city the opportunity to. they have added tenants' rights and given the city the opportunity to mandate a rental abatement for properties that don't bring themselves up to codes. Not advocating for it at this time. I don't think we're in the same situation as Davenport. I think our housing stock is quite a bit different than what you'll find in Davenport. But I'd be curious to know what the experience is down the road and whether it turned out to be a helpful tool for staff as well as a helpful tool for the tenants. And maybe if we had like 18 months of data, we might be in a position to know how their experiment has worked out. And I would ask with the mayor's permission, the council's permission, if maybe in 18 months you do a, a one or two paragraph report, just to let us know.
I would be glad to do that. If it's okay with the mayor and the council, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've seen something in news reports that there's a lawsuit. I think it's Charles City or something that they don't want to let people into for rental inspections. Someone comment on that?
I'd be happy to. I know Mark is following it as well. We are, we're both following the case. It was just argued at the Supreme Court last week. We don't believe that the issues that were involved in that case are really something that we've seen. We haven't, and this was also a very peculiar fact pattern. We will keep an eye on it. We certainly, the inspections of rental housing is, is critical to the life safety of those tenants. So, the inspections are an important part of that, which is why we're updating these codes. But we will certainly keep our eyes on that case. It would impact, you know, pretty severely what we do now. And, and we think that our plan for inspections works and that this will, will help that as well. What, what Mark and Jeremy and Troy are doing, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that consent I remain on tomorrow night's agenda on the consent side. I'm moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow night. Any remaining consent agenda items, any particular council member would like to discuss at this time?
Nick? Thank you, Your Honor. I had a question, came up last time, it was on the agenda. Item C. We had requested the letter, which is now in the packet. I guess I need some help understanding. I don't believe it was there on Friday.
It was there Friday.
It was in there on Friday, okay. While I appreciate the letter, I, I don't know that it gets us necessarily closer to the information that we were hoping for. There's, you know, quite a few questions that we had around this. So, I'd like to move consent item C to the main agenda for tomorrow night.
We have a motion, a second to move it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move it to the regular agenda. Any other items? Greg, Jay?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple, if counsel will bear with me, on J and K, which are the civil service lists. For the one, for the police officer, we had nine applicants and one certified. For the sergeants, we had seven applicants and one certified. It struck me as a little out of the norm to only put up a civil service list with one applicant. It certainly directs the response by the department head when the civil service list only has one applicant on it or one approved person. I was wondering if the Civil Service Commission had considered holding the list and going out and asking for further applicants or what the process was that, that brought the numbers from where they started down to just one person.
Chief Kimball, your thoughts, maybe Kathleen, your thoughts?
Why don't I go first, Kathleen? You want to go first, Kathleen?
Yeah, in regards to the police officer position, when you go through the process of reviewing the applicants, because I put down all the applicants that were, that actually applied. When you review to make sure that they meet, if they don't meet, they're obviously put to the side. You go through testing and you, and you end up with one individual that gets through the whole process just fine. So, out of the nine, the only ones that made it to the civil service interview was one individual.
So, the other people, they either didn't qualify or they didn't show up?
Correct, or they didn't pass the agility, correct.
Was there any discussion about going back out and trying to secure more applicants?
We have done police recruitment probably three or four times in the past 12 months and we usually end up with this amount. We only had one position that was open, so we did not have that discussion to go out further.
And the sergeants?
Sergeant, would you like to take that, Keith?
So, with the sergeants, there were applicants, it was, a few things came into play, the qualifications. So, there's minimum qualifications even apply for a sergeant. And as, you know, we have a much younger department. So, we have individuals that have enough years, which is a minimum of three years. But based on their, based on their qualifications and what they've done from a leadership standpoint, we felt that there was probably only one qualified candidate at this time. There will be a vacancy that will occur upon either my retirement or there's a current sergeant that we believe is going to be coming back. But we're waiting to find out his, his return date maybe in January. So, there's a possibility that position could be filled prior to my retirement. So, we wanted to have that ready to go.
Is this a situation again where you had seven people who filled out the form, six of whom didn't meet the minimum qualifications? And so, there was only one person who was discussed in front of the commission?
They were, they were all discussed and.
All seven?
All seven, and they were all interviewed.
Okay.
Yep. One of the other things too is, you know, moving forward, we've, we felt that based on actual experience qualifications, they, they may have met the minimum as far as years on, which is a minimum of three years as a Betendorf police officer. But really, at this point is not, would not be adequate in a supervisory position going, you know, going forward at this moment. The other thing is, is I would like the, the next person that would take my place to be able to guide their, their department and those, and make those decisions and not have, you know, that would be their leadership team going forward. So, I did, wanted to respect that.
So, what I'm hearing, maybe it's wrong, is that you don't want to have a lot of civil service lists out there for whoever the new chief is? So, that when there, you get a new batch of people or a new look at the supervisors with fresh eyes?
Specifically supervisors, yes. Police officer applicant, applications, like Kathleen said, that has been an ongoing process and will continue to be where we usually have been getting one to, maybe one to three people that by the time we go through the whole process, actually qualify or even pass the minimum tests.
That's a huge difference from 15, 20.
Yeah, it's a totally different world out there in law enforcement. Huge, totally different. In fact, there's the, there's, there's other cities, their code has actually been changed where we, you know, I've discussed with the city attorney and city administrator. But right now, there, there's a way where you can actually keep an open process continuing and kind of not have civil service involved for hiring. But I'm not advocating for that, but they actually, they've done that because we're, you're trying to be, you're trying to be flexible. And what, what happens is, is when you have a vacancy, from the time we start the application process to the time we get somebody hired through the academy, trained up, it's about a year. And we have to have flexibility of, of being able to go forward and be able to fill, fill these positions because then we'll have, we'll have openings for longer periods of time. And I think we've been pretty good and flexible and tactical of, of working with that and finding the right people. The other thing too, and just being transparent, is Betendorf Police Department has always had a higher qualification, minimum qualification to become a police officer than what's required by the state of Iowa. The state of Iowa requires a high school degree. We require either equivalent of two years of college or two years of active military or two years as a sworn certified officer, which I, I believe is good. But that's going to limit your applicant pool just by those.
Any other questions on consent?
As long as I've got the chief on the.
Okay.
On consent L, Your Honor, where we're replacing some police vehicles. The council letter indicated that there was a replacement of a vehicle currently being used as transportation for officers going to and from the law enforcement academy. And I was just curious, happy to go along with it. I'm curious how often that particular vehicle is in use by the department? Do we send officers to the ILEA often? Is this once a month, once a week, twice a week?
So, there's a few, it's pretty much, I would call it a vehicle used for training. So, when they're attending the academy, that vehicle's not, it's gone for the entire time. So, for, for a 16-week period, that vehicle is gone because obviously, they take it up there and it stays with them during the whole week up in, at the academy in Johnston and Camp Dodge, so.
That particular vehicle is unavailable to the general city 50% of the time, 40% of the time?
I, I would probably say at least that because when it's not, when we aren't having somebody going to the academy, that we also send our officers to outside schools. So, that's for that too, yep, for training, yep.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, any other questions? Just Jerry then Frank.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the same item, on item L, I don't recall, do we have a requirement in the master lease with Enterprise that police vehicles be made in USA?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. Our, generally, our squad, so, I will say that all our, what I would call our police package patrol vehicles, whether they're marked or unmarked, are all going to be vehicles. They're going to be Fords or Chevy, or Chevys, and we've been trying to stay with Fords. Now, you have to understand, we have a lot of other vehicles, they're administration, undercover, detective. So, those, there's just a various array and we don't want them all looking the same or be all the make and models and things like that. So, there's, there's other reasons for mixing those up. And frankly, sometimes the rely, you know, the reliability of those are, we have many issues with those. So, that's just to have a, a variety in the fleet. Because when we're doing surveillance or we're doing other things, we have to have vehicles that blend in with everybody else.
At, at the same time though, Honda, Toyota, even the Nissan that, that you're including in the list tonight, I think there, a lot of them are made in USA. Most, most manufacturers, even though they have a name from a foreign country that we associate with, with, with an outside the USA, they have factories in the USA. And I guess I would prefer that we buy American-made.
Okay.
Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to ask the chief, I'm going to tag on to L. Just a question, you've been with Enterprise for how long now?
How many, we about three, three years?
About three, about three years.
Is, is the performance of this agreement with Enterprise fleet, fleet management, is it working out to what you want it to do for your department and supplying you with the vehicles you need in a timely manner?
So, I, to, to that, to that, yes. The, with, as I know, public, Brian Schmidt, you know, as far as procuring vehicles in general and in the, in the law enforcement world, there's a lot of, by doing that, we're being able to procure these vehicles in a timely manner. They're much more efficient in getting not only these vehicles in a timely manner, but they are actually providing all the ability to be able to get them transported to where they need to be to get installs for all the equipment. You know, one time, that, that has changed over the years where we used to have local installers, like put up, there's a lot of equipment, you know, between all the electronics. And quite frankly, it was becoming harder and harder here locally to have that done as far as those places didn't have qualified people and they weren't, we had vehicles that were sitting in the back of our police station that sat sometimes for six months because they weren't, that's how long it took to get all that other equipment installed. So, one thing about Enterprise is they've got, they've got that all lined up. A lot of them are outside of Chicago. And so, when they get these vehicles, they go straight there, they get the installs. And so, when they show up behind our police station, other than a few minor things and putting the decals on them, they're ready to go. So, I know Lieutenant Champion is very happy, I think we're very happy with, with everything they've been able to pride. Now, obviously, there's a, there's a factor of cost, you know, and what, is there a cost in this? And I think that's still yet to be looked at. And I think we're going to be reporting to you on that with the strategic goals as far as like where we're at. And, and I don't know, but we'll be able to report on that too, the, the cost.
Thank you.
For purchasing them, you know, outright, yep.
Anything else on consent? But I'd like to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C, which will be moved to our regular agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I don't have anything to add to the agenda tomorrow. Anybody else have a, yes, Greg?
I just want to thank, I want to thank you, Mayor and city staff for your support on Veterans Day. We had, city staff went up, cleaned the place up. It looked great. Mayor showed up to be our main speaker and a lot of, a lot of people from the staff showed up for it. I thought it was, we tried to keep it short in the winter time. I thought it went pretty well and, so I just wanted to thank everybody for supporting that project.
All right, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I would like to thank the staff for arranging the inspection of the pool and ice rink. Thank you.
How about a motion to adjourn? I'm moved. We stand adjourned. Good work, people. We'll see you tomorrow night, 7 o'clock.